Call our regular council meeting to order for the first of 2014. Welcome and a Happy New Year to everybody. Mayor's got a little bit of a flu bug, so stay away. I'm only here because of Councilor Schuman.
No hugs.
Or Councilor Kenny.
Thank you.
So I didn't, no hugging this morning. Nobody's getting hugged unless you want the flu. So our first item of business is new counselor business. Counselor Wilber?
Yeah, I had actually sent out an email earlier with regards to some residents on 21st Street. And I don't know if Counselor Malkinson had declared conflict, so I don't know if he's going to be a part of this discussion, but anyways, forewarning. Anyway, so they're a little concerned that they had received, I guess, notice going forward on the development behind them. During our discussions, there was talk about a berm being put in place between them and the Vedder development. And so on this list they received, that berm wasn't on there, so they are concerned that, one, it may be overlooked or not put in place. And they're wondering what the city has, what we're doing or what we have done to ensure that that berm is put between them and that new development. So perhaps through you, your worship to staff, if we could get some information on that and maybe get them rest assured.
Jim?
Well, through your worship, I've had this conversation with council before. Statements made at a rezoning have no binding effect. So you can promise a berm at rezoning or a four-story hotel or Christmas hampers where everyone in town meets and absolutely no difference. Once council's rezoned the property, any appropriate use is permitted. That's different than the development permit. So in the development permit application that Mr. Vedder submitted, he did not include a berm. That went out for notification. It's in the notification period now. Now that Counselor Wilber has put that concern on the record, the permit can't be issued by staff. It'll have to come back to council. We'll get a hold of Mr. Vedder and ask him whether he intends to have a berm or not. And council will have to be satisfied with those answers before they issue the development permit.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Parslow?
This weekend I read in my Dawson Creek News, an article called Waters, Sewers and Budgets on the 2014 agenda, and I thought it was a very thorough overview that you had given. And I thought maybe under mayor's business, you might feel free to talk to it a bit because it was, to me, what's the word I'm looking for? It was a good prelude to our budget work, if I can put it that way.
Perfect. So I will, I'll make a note of that. I will speak to that. I got interviewed about a week and a half ago in regards to Counselor, yeah, we should bring, bring your uncle back. So I just was interviewed in regards to what the year looked ahead for me as the mayor. And so I gave some kind of high level or some detail in regards to that. And so I'll be absolutely happy to talk about that in mayor's business, if that so pleases Anything else, Counselor's business? Item three, minutes, minutes of our regular meeting of December 16th for adoption. Counselor Malkinson? Seconded, Counselor McFadden, discussion. All those in favor, opposed, carried? What's your business arising from the minutes? Item five is our correspondence, five one. Counselor Malkinson?
I'd move that we draft a, I believe it's a letter in response that's requested, or sorry, a letter in support.
Five one?
Five one.
They want our-
The letter expect, election expense limits?
That's right, that's right.
They want us to submit.
Oh, yes, 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 that's right. That's right. Well, I, Cheryl's got a idea.
Are you moving?
Sure.
Seconded?
Sure.
Discussion? Go ahead.
So at UBCM, there was quite an in-depth conversation about this when Minister Oaks visited us. And there was, I mean, of course, around that table, there's a huge variety of opinions with regards to the expense, election campaign expenses. And there was a lot of discussion around letting each community sort of, like Minister Oaks was actually the one that brought it up, and sort of let each community set their own, their own ceiling for expenses because they know their community best. And, I mean, some people didn't like that idea, but the differences in opinions from the small communities to the big communities, and so it's, I mean, we haven't talked about it, and maybe we can forward this onto a committee of the whole where we can actually have an in-depth conversation about it and then forward something on. I haven't read this white paper that she talks about, and I should have looked it up over the weekend, but I didn't. But I think we should, we should definitely put something, submit something if anyone else has any opinions on the matter. I mean, I think the big problem is in some cities, you get one candidate, I mean, we saw in Prince George in the last election, where you get one candidate that has huge resources for spending, you know, lots of donations. And concern in Vancouver about, you know, somebody with big bucks basically buying the seats and stuff like that. So that's, I guess, why they're looking at it. And in fact, Vancouver wants to have their own rules altogether. They think they, if they have their own charter, they should be able to have their own rules separate from everyone else. But it was quite a conversation at the UBCM table, and I don't know, I think maybe we should have a conversation too.
Counselor Parslow?
Just in light of that, what is the motion that we have on the table right now?
I think just that we've received the letter and will respond.
I was thinking for discussion.
For discussion?
Yeah, and then we can do what we will with it.
I was going to suggest that we just refer this as to the next committee of the whole, but that doesn't jive with the motion, so.
Let's do that.
All right.
Or maybe it does, maybe you say on discussion at the next committee of the whole meeting, if I can make that a mention.
Perfect. Okay.
It's all good.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. Thank you. Item five two, we have a letter from Mayor Ackerman from Fort St. John in regards to the mayor's ice carving challenge on February 8th. So this is a request for me to attend and to, I am the least talented person on the globe to do an ice carving challenge, so I'm going to need some help here.
Some artistic help.
Counselor Malkinson?
I'll definitely give you a hand if you want.
Are you handy?
I am.
You have to be.
It's just not saying it what.
I'm enthusiastic.
Did it say what the theme was?
I don't know.
But there is a theme, usually.
I don't believe so.
It's good to have a plan in advance, like honestly.
I think you could carve out a hug, your worship.
Maybe.
I think so.
Okay, we'll be all over that. So Counselor Malkinson is moving that we attend?
Yeah.
He and I.
That's right.
Do I have a second or for the motion?
Oh, I think that's, yes.
Is there any further discussion?
Those that can will come and support.
Cheer you on.
As my grandson says, "Thank you." All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. We'll do our best. Item five three, we have a letter from Robert Hux, Committee of the Republic of Canada. Counselor Parslow?
Move that we receive this for information.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Kenny, discussion. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you. Item five four, we have a letter from Jocelyn Isert. Counselor Parslow?
Move that we receive this for information.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Wilber, discussion. Counselor Schuman?
Through your worship to Shelley, do we generally, have we sponsored this in the past?
Through your worship, no.
Further discussion? Counselor Wilber?
I'm just, I think, it's, this is not proper application to apply for sponsorship, so perhaps we could send the letter saying that they need to apply through our application process.
Counselor Parslow?
Well, I wondered, would we even consider sponsoring something like this in another community? I would certainly consider it through the proper process if it was here in Dawson Creek perhaps, but I don't know about, does the council have any appetite for sponsoring events like this in communities in the Peace region? I certainly don't.
Counselor Kenny?
I believe it's a regional event that, you know, covers all, you know, all the communities there.
Thank you. Further discussion? Did you want to make that as an amendment to the motion that we received, Counselor Wilber?
I believe so. I think going forward that we have a process, so we need to let, when they write a letter, we need to let them know that we do have a process. And then, once they've made proper application, then we can discuss whether we would like to fund it or not. In my view, I'm-
Can I just ask, is that an appropriate amendment to the motion or is that a separate motion?
It's a separate one, I believe.
For information? We're receiving for information and then adding a motion that we, or adding an amendment that we refer to.
Direct them to the proper-
So I just ask for-
Through your worship, receiving for information means there's no action whatsoever.
So that would be a separate motion we would need if we wanted to advise them?
We would need to defeat that motion and then proceed with the new motion.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Shelley, is there, like, the sponsorship, through your worship to Shelley, the sponsorship is different than the grant applications though, right? Like, that's, do we have a specific sponsorship process, like, council?
Through your worship, that's correct. Council has received sponsorships throughout the year. The budget for grants and sponsorships is about $50,000 a year. The grants go through a one-time application process, but sponsorships, you basically need the amount requested, you need the budget, and I think that's all here, so I'm not sure if there's any additional information that you don't, you know, that you need to-
Yeah.
-to make your decision.
So they've covered it then? It's all right, we've accepted information.
So we receive for information?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. Thank you. So we're going to move past allegations into report because we're a bit ahead, so Counselor Malkinson?
Seven one, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to move that we receive this report from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the Mile Zero Park Society Board Representative. And further, that Ms. Elizabeth Birak, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, be recommended as the city's second representative on the Mile Zero Park Society Board.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Schuman, discussion. Counselor Parslow?
Just, I guess, that information, I think it's in the chart, not a charter, in the bylaws somewhere about the composition of this committee. Is it, am I correct in saying that the city is limited to two members on the board through to, depending on?
Yeah, through your worship, the city of Dawson Creek is limited to two. The Park Society has set 10 directors on the board and the city, those two of those positions.
And one of them is?
Tim Bailey.
Plus the additional liaison.
Tim Bailey.
Oh, so two and then a liaison.
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't think it's on the board, so.
Further discussion? It's great that we have a couple of people from our community interested in serving on the board. I know we were out there advertising, so I appreciate both Ms. Flynn and Ms. Birak for putting their hands up and agreeing to let their name stand. Further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. Thank you. Report seven two, Director of Community Services, Counselor Parslow?
I'd like to move that report number 14-001 from the Director of Community Services, where the 2016 IIHF under-18 Women's World Hockey Championship bid be received. Further, the council authorized staff to submit the completed bid to Hockey Canada by January the 17th, 2014, to host the 2016 International Ice Hockey Federation Under-18 Women's World Hockey Championship. Further, that the bid submission include an exit clause, allowing the city to withdraw its bid if exclusivity to Hockey Canada Premier Marketing Partners prevents the city from seeking event sponsorship and partnership from the oil and gas industry in the region.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Schuman, discussion. Counselor McFadden?
Just a question perhaps to Barry, your staff, do you know at this point who we are competing against for this event? Like, the Americans, the English, the Germans, or?
No, this is strictly, this bid is a Canadian bid, so it would be anyone within Canada.
I never said I'm good at it.
So the answer is yes, Barry knows, but no, he can't tell you because he knows in his role as Hockey Canada Director, and he hasn't even shared that with me, so.
Brilliant.
Jeez.
Are we talking at the foremost discrepancy here?
I'll keep that under advisement for the review.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
I think the national event that we held was a huge success. And the whole organization that was part of that, and the detailed studies that were done about impact and so on, were all very favorable, and I think it would be a really, we have the capacity, we should do our utmost to get this sort of thing to the community.
Thank you. Further discussion? I'm adding in, I completely am in support of this. I think it's an excellent opportunity for us to showcase not only the community, but the capacity to put on a world-class event within the facilities that we have in our city. And as long as the agreements are going to be able to, we're going to be able to make the agreements with the sponsorship, then I think we do all we can to make it what it will be a world-class event for our city. So I think it's a great opportunity. Further discussion? All in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you. Item 7.3, Counselor Wilber?
I'll make the motion that report number 14-003 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the development permit application for Canadian Tire for 116248 Street be received. Further, that the development permit number 14-01 for the development of a commercial gas station at 116248 Street be authorized in principle and issued upon successful completion of the required 10-day notification period and receipt of financial security. And yay for Canadian Tire expanding again.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Schuman, discussion. Counselor Malkinson?
Your worship, it's, I was pleased to see this application from Canadian Tire. I am just a little curious, you know, the traffic along that servicing road is pretty awful, especially during the winters, and I'm wondering if condition of development would ever see any improvements to that, to that part. I'm, I don't know, I'm, I'm not certain that it's a great, well, maybe not necessarily a, I've heard it described as an odd well-thought-out servicing road, and I'm wondering if any improvements are on the horizon there.
Jim?
Through your worship, your transportation master plan spoke to that, the issue of that frontage road and suggested some alterations. I believe that characterizing them as improvements might actually not accord with how the public is going to see them, specifically preventing left-hand turns from the end of that frontage road onto 116th and from 116th onto that frontage road. So that's what's in your transportation master plan. You have a report coming later in this agenda that suggests priority activities on the transportation master plan and doesn't include that piece of work yet. In any event, those, those concerns will become more vibrant the more vibrant that area becomes, but I don't think that would be a reason for you not to want the area to become vibrant.
Thank you. Yeah, to me, I guess the component, I look at a Canadian Tire being, it's got access onto the frontage as well as onto 118th, would it be? Going past A&W into Walmart. So, so it's got both sides and the back. It's, the bottleneck tends to be more at 118th and 116th, trying to get off of that frontage road onto 8th Street. And certainly, to me, that's the aspect that we need to put some thought into. The more we create the activity in the area with the development, then the more, the busier the traffic tends to be and creates that issue. So hooray for Canadian Tire for stepping up and adding that much more development into our community, and we need to then take the next steps in understanding what that means to us and our community and part of it being on our transportation master plan. Jim?
And as is my practice, I'll just once again say, I spend the weekend reading the websites and the blogs and the Facebook sites where everybody says Dawson Creek is dying, there's no business activity. And then I come to council on Monday and there's yet another huge investment by yet another commercial activity. I think the Facebook sites are wrong.
I went skiing.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. Thank you. Item seven four, Director, Deputy Director of Community Services, Counselor Schuman?
I move report number 14-004 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding the Kinnarina Skate Shack be received. Further, the council approved the transfer of the Kinnarina Commercial Rental Space Agreement from Mickey Jay's Enterprise Limited to Dawson Creek Recreation under the existing terms and conditions.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Wilber, discussion. Terms then go till the end of this, our next year's arena year?
March 21st, 2015, so the end of this hockey year that's coming up.
Okay. Good. Counselor Wilber?
I'd just like to add that it's nice to see the service is going to still be available there.
Yeah, I guess this is kind of one of those ones historically, when they move the concession services out and minor hockey didn't provide it, and I'm assuming that's who didn't. Nice to have the opportunity for the kids to have that service of skate sharpening right there at the rink. It's probably not one that's a huge, huge revenue generator for anybody to take on, given the commitment of time and equipment and all of that stuff. So it's terrific that somebody is doing it, and we look at it again at the end of 2000, the arena year, 2015, to ensure that it meets and continues to meet that policy for us as a community. Thank you. Although, sorry, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. Thank you. Item 7.5, we have a report from the City Planner on Secondary Suites, Counselor Wilber?
I'll make a motion that report number 14-005 from the City Planner regarding review of secondary suites be received for information.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Schuman, discussion. Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I was interested to note that we and Chetwind are the only communities that allow this practice in our region, in the sample populations, anyway. I guess I have a question and then a suggestion. Again, my memory tells me that in our development permits for these sort of duplexes that have secondary suites, that there is a, an additional parking spot required. Is that correct, first of all?
Through your worship, actually, there's no development permit for duplexes. Development permits are on any multifamily, three units or more, so there's no statement for duplexes, so that's not handled through.
So how, so how is that issue handled?
Parking, zoning would just dictate the parking required and also the subdivision by law would dictate the parking.
And the parking requirements are what?
It'd be one space per unit, per moment, I believe is, if I'm quoted correctly.
So one space per unit, so we could have a duplex with a secondary suite with just the normal parking for a duplex without a suite? Is that correct?
If you had a suite, they would add another space, but most parking, most driveways are deep enough that if it's double Y, it can be considered four spaces.
Okay. Well, we have, when we've dealt with this motion, I was, I really liked us to discuss this at some length, perhaps. I mean, I did look around the town a little bit this weekend and saw the development up the 17th Street there. I do have a few concerns about, about this, and I don't know if rest of council does, but I'd like, I just like to see, you know, how is this place going to look in 20 years from now? That's what I was thinking this weekend. So, anyway, I just, to you, Mayor, of course, but I would like to just consider adding this to the committee of the whole meeting.
Absolutely. I think, you know, first, to me, the aspect of us now having held six or seven of the meetings with the developers, realtors, investors, getting a sense of what's happening to density in terms of what we originally anticipated with allowing the suites, the in-law companion suites, as a part of RS1 and how the impacts now to duplexes. And so I think it's been a real learning experience for us to understand what's actually happening with the development for council. I expect and hopefully will be finished those meetings by the end of January, and at which time we can bring back a more fulsome report on the issue, what the impacts of, or at least, this is my opinion anyway, is that then we understand what we need to do if there is work to be done on the aspect of how those suites are impacting our overall plan of what this community looks like in the future. And I think right now, the development is being driven by a demand from the investment community that's saying, it looks attractive up in that community because of what's happening with all the construction outside the community and the high demand for rental accommodation and providing that need. But it's, what is it doing to us in the long term for what our community looks like when it comes to single-family homes and community? And so I think, to me, that's the great part about what I've learned out of those sessions. And hopefully then we can bring back a real good conversation and discussion once we're finished them through the committee of the whole, to say, okay, here's what we need to now understand what it has done and what we want it to do in the future. Counselor, sorry, Counselor Schuman and Jim?
I guess I'll go first.
No, no, you're first.
So, thank you for that, because I think this is just a piece that we add to all of that other information that we've gotten from those meetings, and then, you know, we can make the decision after. I really appreciated this report and seeing the differences in the communities. One thing that stood out to me was, in many of the communities, in order to have the secondary suite, the owner had to occupy the main. And I think that that would, I mean, in my mind, that would solve so many of these little issues because you're not ending up with this, I mean, this, this conversation is obviously for later, but that's what stood out to me, was owner occupied? I mean, I think that's what we all envisioned. We didn't envision houses that had three guys upstairs and three guys downstairs and six 350s out in the, on the road, right? So that, that stood out for me, and I really appreciated the report.
Thank you. Jim?
Yes, I just wanted to, to make sure that Counselor Parslow's remarks are not mischaracterized.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Every other municipality we surveyed allows secondary suites. It's the suites in duplexes that only ourselves in Chetwind allow.
And so just in response to Counselor Schuman, and I just want to add this last point. To me, over the, over the holidays at Christmas, I had a really good conversation with a young- To me, over the, over the holidays at Christmas, I had a really good conversation with a young gentleman who has been working here for the last seven months, building a plant outside the community. Three hundred people employed in the construction of that plant. They all get their living out allowance. They're all in town renting someplace to live. And so when you think about that, we're meeting a demand and a need that's going to probably exist in our community over the next three or four or five years, depending on what type of construction takes place, meeting the needs of the industry for plants, processing plants, compressor sites and all of that. And, and at the same time, we're going to, so we got this fire hose, this bubble coming at us and requiring, and the need for that rental accommodation, for those construction type positions. And then you fill that behind that with the permanency of jobs that are created by the construction of those jobs. We, I think we need to have that conversation and understand we got some short-term demands and then we're going to have some long-term, what we feel the community needs to look like. And so I really think these conversations we've had over the last five or six weeks have been so helpful in understanding what's going on and guide us in terms of what we need to do for the future. So thank you for that. I'll get off my, my old pen. So we have a report we've received for information. Any further discussion?
Well,
Counselor Wilkinson?
Your worship, I do apologize. I did hear Counselor Parslow speaking about wishing to discuss this at the committee of the whole meeting. I, what is our, I suppose the outcomes that we receive from, you know, the report that we receive from staff about the outcomes of our meetings with developers will provide us with some action going forward as it relates to this report. But what, what have we got next?
So my, from, from my perspective, my plan would be we roll up that information that we got from those meetings in a report to the public, a report through council with some recommendations of what we feel we need to do in order to guide our development in the future and as it relates to in-law and secondary suites and duplexes and density and our RS one. So it's a, it's a broad conversation for us, I think, but we, we will bring it back through that process once we've completed those meetings, as we committed to do, bring back the report as a whole with some recommendations. And we do it through the committee of the whole.
Yeah.
And I expect we'll have those done within the next two or three weeks, we should, hopefully.
Yeah, I was assuming based upon your comments that we would be looking at the February committee of the whole meeting at the earliest.
Yeah. That would be my, hopefully, we've got a couple more meetings scheduled.
Yep.
And then we should be done, I think.
Right on.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you. So now we're nine o'clock, so I'd like to move back to our agenda. Do you want to take a quick please this break and we'll get the delegations, allow them to get set up?
So we have Anthony Eber, CEO of Northern BC Tourism Association, and here to give us a update on the tourism. And also Anthony's the CEO of the Canada Winter Games Committee in Prince George, so his dual role. And here today to give us an update. And first, welcome. We appreciate you coming and reporting and providing council with an update.
Thank you. I always love coming to Dawson Creek and it's been a few years since I've been here to give a presentation on tourism. And I thought the timing was right for a number of reasons, but before I get to that, I will talk about, I have a short presentation. I'm actually the Chair of the Board of Directors for the Canada Winter Games coming in two thousand and fifteen. So I'm the lead volunteer, I guess, if you, if you will. My paid job is, is as CEO of Northern BC Tourism. I'm very busy these days. And today there's a luncheon and I'm doing dual presentations. I'm doing this presentation. I'm also giving a broader presentation on the games themselves. And I pledge to you that I will come back and do that. That, we didn't get the presentation to you on the game, so I'm going to do the tourism one. So part of the game's role, and I would talk more about this, but we, we see it as a pan regional games and that's how it was presented when we went and, and applied for the bid. Congratulations on, on agreeing to submit a bid for the, I had talked to Barry a little bit about our experience with our event and what they're doing and we're big supporters of that. I think that, you know, one of the things that we are all doing, I know Dawson Creek was very much involved in Prince George getting the bid. I wasn't involved in the bid process that Prince George went through. And I know that the mayor at the time, I think Mike Burney, Mayor Burney was with us when the, the bid went, happened. But one of the aspects that we've, we've created is we have an ambassadors group, a made up of elected mayors across North Central British Columbia. And myself and Mayor Sherry Green are the co-chairs of that. This year with the lead up to the games, we did a small event that some of you may have been invited to at UBCM this past October, I guess it was. Was it October? September? October? And, and this year there's going to be much more activities at NCLGA. There'll be an event. There'll be a much bigger event at UBCM. You'll all be invited. And so I'm going to present the team jacket for the ambassadors group to your worship.
You get a jacket?
It wasn't that nice.
Yeah, I was going to say, you want to hug it or not?
You wouldn't want to hug me today.
Well, thanks so much. And that's our official logo.
How cool is that?
Let's know if we did the size right.
Thank you.
And I also have a few things for the other counselors. You get an official game puck. You get a pin. Well, so on your pin is, there's a red bar along the bottom and that is being given up to, call it ID, shall I? So only select people are getting the pin. Here you go. You also get a game puck. So that'll be the puck that'll be used at our event.
But I'm here to tell you about tourism. And like I said, it's been a couple of years since I was here talking about tourism in Northern British Columbia. I think we all know, I heard some things already in your reports to council of the exciting times that are before us in all of Northern British Columbia. Northern British Columbia, to me, is about sixty-three percent of the province, includes Heideguy, your wonderful area, of course. And one of the things that we know is that there's lots of activity. So in September of this year, the Vancouver Sun put out a prospectus, if you will, of what by two thousand and thirty-five will be happening in Northern British Columbia. And it's our guide to the economic future, our being British Columbia's. I think we all know the kinds of things that are being talked about in Northern BC. One of the articles that, that got written was by Stephen Hume. And some of you would know him. He's a longtime columnist with, in the Vancouver Sun. And he goes into some depth and detail. I don't have time today to, to read some of it, but it's about the mystique and the reality of what Northern British Columbia is. The mystique being all the pioneers and the people that have been forged the trail for all of us in all our communities, all the resource development. And the reality is by two thousand and thirty-five, there's an estimated seventy billion dollars worth of projects happening in Northern British Columbia. But he also goes into detail, not only those things, but the need for all of us to pay attention to the balance that will need to strike to protect why tourism is important. So the caption of this picture right here before you is, whatever major projects are on the books for Northern British Columbia, the tourism value of unspoilt wilderness such as the scene of the Taku River cannot be underestimated. So as I do my rounds these days and talk to councils and, and the leaders across Northern British Columbia and the residents, it's, our message is one of striking that balance because this is what we're selling to our customers around the world. So today, I'm just going to give you a quick snapshot of the tourism sector in Northern British Columbia and a little bit about what we do as an association to represent that sector and to work closely with the communities. In this community, you're blessed, very much blessed. And I'm going to start off by saying that I don't know if you know how unique Dawson Creek is and your role within the tourism structure in the province. It is probably, I give this talk a lot around the province and across Canada. And Dawson Creek is really remarkable for the amount of investment that you've put into the tourism sector over many, many years. You've had leaders like Bud Powell who's with us. You have people working with us, the works for, for our organization, April Moy, who's here as well. And now you have Sam and her team. And I can't say strongly enough how remarkable what you've done. It's unique. It, it, you don't see it in other parts of Northern BC and you certainly don't see it across the province in terms of the investment that you've made. And it's really done great things in this community. So Northern British Columbia, here, here's kind of what's going on. I'm, I'm telling you today that this is a strong sector and it is a strong, very important part of who we are as a northern, in the north and the residents of Northern BC. So this year in Northern BC, well, you know, the games are coming in two thousand and fifteen. We are gearing up and we're looking at all the tourism aspects to leverage that event. You have new heli-ski territory opening up with bear paw heli-skiing out of Prince George. You have mountain biking sector that's burgeoning. This is a shot from Burns Lake. They've added nineteen kilometers of new trails in Burns Lake. You have the Hank and Evelyn Back Country Ski Area near Smithers, which is opening up with new lodges and new trail system. You have, I don't know if you've heard this term, but there's a term called glamping, which is, you know, luxury camping. And there is a facility now in Northern British Columbia. It's called Skeena Meadow and it's near Hazelton. And that, you get a, you get a high-end kind of tent. It's on the Skeena River and it takes you ten minutes in an ATV to get to it. You have the, the Kiss, or in the Nass Valley, you have the Nishka Museum, which is a wonderful museum. You have WestJet flying not only into, later on, there's a slide that says it's going in Fort St. John, which is great, but it's also flying into Terrace, which we all know access is an issue for all of us up in Northern BC. This is the Stewart, this is the Cassiar Cannery, which is past the North Pacific Cannery near Port Edward. And they now have accommodation facilities for people to stay. Around Northern British Columbia, it's remarked, well, this community is remarkable. In my short time in Northern BC of seven years, I can't get over how many hotels are here now. But this, this is a picture of the Crest Hotel. And across Northern BC, you see major investment of millions and millions of dollars going into renovating existing properties. The Crest was just one of many this year. You have fly fishing, new fly fishing operators on Heideguy. You're probably not, you're probably familiar with this project, which is the Alaska Highway Community Initiative, which has been going on for many, many years and is really starting to gain traction. And we're very hopeful that that'll be a major success in two thousand and seventeen. And I think you've had a delegation from Bud and April on that. As I said, Fort St. John has got WestJet flying in. You have, the Heritage Village here has done improvements. There's improving products all around us. And this is another remarkable story. I don't need to tell you, but from, I give this presentation across Northern BC and in the province and to talk about the In-Canada Event Center and the draw that it has become for your community and the types of events, you're quite the envy of people in Prince George. But the good news is Prince George residents are traveling here to go to events. And then I don't know how much you know about this, but this is a remarkable project that is being led out of Tumblr Ridge, but will involve this area. And that's the proposed geopark that will be a UNESCO heritage site. And I actually haven't had an update on where that's at, but we're very hopeful that that will happen soon. The Emperor Challenge, some of you would know about it. This thing has really grown over seventeen years and it's now capped at seven, a thousand people running up that mountain and they're turning people away every year. So this is Chetwind and a new hiking trail. And so what we talk about when we talk about tourism revenues in the province, it's not a small industry for the province. It's about a thirteen four, point four billion dollar industry. We estimate it to be annually in Northern BC, over a billion dollars annually. And where visitors are coming from, this is British Columbia, so visit, visitors are coming from, you'll see, you see BC, that is our biggest consumer. BC residents travel in BC and that is our biggest market. You see the rest of Canada and then regional US. Usually that, when they, that slide nineteen percent is made up of the western states. You see Asia, Pacific, Europe, et cetera, coming into the province. And in Northern British Columbia, about eighty percent of our market is from British Columbia itself. And I'm going to talk a little, a little bit later about where we're at with that. You see Alberta, of course, is a major market of ours and this is on down the line in, in Canada. Internationally, Northern British Columbia is a sought-after destination. I cannot tell you how many times I've spoken to elected leaders across Northern BC and they're telling me that there's no tourism in Northern BC. And I tell them that as I was speaking to them, a fleet of RVs drove past with Canada Dream across the top. So I know they're from Germany, Holland or the UK. And you can see where our international visitors are coming from. Interestingly enough, Australia is one of our major growing markets for Northern British Columbia. US visitor is, this would make sense to many of you living here. You, you would see a lot of these people. This year we've had a number of our travelers tell us from across the US that the experience they have on the Alaska Highway and in Northern BC rivals Alaska. So they're traveling to Alaska, but they're seeing what they want to see in British Columbia. So this past year, we really saw a slow start to the bookings and to, and to people, the business side of things. But what was really interesting, since the downturn of the economy in two thousand and nine, we've really seen what I would term the return of the US visitor. Your visitor center here in Dawson Creek would see that a lot, but they're really coming back now and, and that's good news for Northern BC. And, and I think this is the first year that we can really say that we saw marked increase of southern, our southern provincial people. I don't know what to call them. Yeah, yeah. Well, I won't badmouth them. Let's just put it that way. They, they are coming up here more. We are a sought-after destination for them. It is a tough nut to crack. We know that. And it's something that we continue to work on. So Northern British Columbia Tourism Association is a contracted organization, a not-for-profit, that Bud Powell has been a board member of for a number of years. We now have Darcy Dauber from the Brown Social House in your, your area that is on our Board of Directors. We are an independent, not-for-profit. But we, our major contract is with the newly formed Crown Corporation called Destination BC. Five years ago, it was called Tourism BC. It is now out of, outside of the provincial government again. We do four major things for, under that contract. The main one to help businesses and the communities is marketing programs, which your community of Dawson Creek is very active in. And these are the markets that we generally look to go towards, British Columbia being the big one, other parts of Canada, US and et cetera. Then you'll see that mostly what we're, if anyone asks you, if you remember one thing from this presentation is what, what do they market to in tourism? They market to the person who's touring. I don't need to tell many people in Dawson Creek that they see the RVs rolling through. They see the motorbikes. They see all these people. And those are what we term as touring clients, touring customers, and that's who we really market to. But there's a number of things that we do with adventure ski, fishing, et cetera. And some of the highlights this year, one of the big ones is next year will be the sixth year, so this past year was the fifth year, that we work directly with British Columbia, or sorry, BC Fairies Vacations. They booked in one, one campaign with our support and our marketing in conjunction with Dawson Creek. Dawson Creek got profiled in the Vancouver Sun, one point one million dollars in bookings. And I can tell you some of those bookings were right here in Dawson Creek. Go ahead.
With the cuts that BC Fairies is proposing to put into effect in April first, what, what is your organization? I mean, I know that the Northern BC routes have been cut more so than the Southern BC routes. And so has your organization had anything to say about that or?
Yes, we have lots to say about it. Yeah, it, it's, it's, it's many-fold and multifaceted in terms of challenge. I guess my only message, I could go into many, I'd love to talk more, but it's, it's complicated. We've known this was coming for a long, long time. So those cuts, although we didn't know exactly what they'd be, I've been in meetings for five years with BC Fairies and we knew the direction of where they were heading. I, I guess the only good news I could say is we didn't get a cancellation like they did on the route to Bellicula. That's going to severely, well, there's whole tourism businesses that will, I don't know if they'll make it because no one's going to drive, you know, from Vancouver up to Bellicula and then back. They want to do a circle route. So we haven't been cut that way. Where the biggest impact in the short term's going to be is that there are tour operators, which I was going to talk about in a second, that, you know, they, they book business with clients two years out. So they need to know that that ferry's going to be running. And when it, it's pulled within four months, that's not good for anybody in the province of British Columbia. And it doesn't make us look good internationally. So that, what we're trying to do to mitigate it is to make sure that they're still putting money into a campaign like that. So we, we still have ferries running. It's a reduced schedule. In the summer, busy summer season, it's not reduced to the point where it's going to impact us that much. Where it's really going to impact is in the May, May period, the early part of the season and then in September. And my message to BC Fairies is, okay, so you've, you've cut the ferries. Would you mind putting more money back in the pot so we can market to people and get more people on the, on the ferry? So I don't know where it's going to go. I think mayor and councils across Northern BC have the biggest impact with BC Fairies. And I've had all the meetings with MLAs, et cetera. So we'll see. And this is the cover of our new travel guide. Travel guide is one of our major ways of talking to consumers. The milepost is the bible. It is our next biggest project. Many, many businesses and the community of Dawson Creek are involved in that. And then there's a few other ones there. You can see we're involved in the ski sector across Northern BC. You can see we're involved in the ski sector across northern B.C. Fishing continues to be a major one. Um, snowmobiling and many outdoor adventure shows are the kinds of projects, including hunting shows, we go to. Travel Trade is who we taught, when we talked to international tour operators, and basically when you go and do your travel agent and want to book a trip, your dream trip to Europe, and you ask for an itinerary from your travel agent and they give you a, a magazine, we are attempting to get our businesses, our communities into those magazines for tour operators and travel agents in Europe. So that's, that, that's what Travel Trade really is, and it's a big job and we deal, these are the, how we deal with our international clients. And one of the things that's really interesting to me is that we've seen some interest from Asian markets in the last little while, and I would say we're not going to see the, the bearing of that fruit for about ten years, but it's interesting they're now looking to come to Northern British Columbia. Media is another major way for us to get the message out. We have a small budget and, um, this is our, our, one of our key ways of getting the word out and building awareness for northern B.C. You can see if we were to add, we were to buy the equivalent advertising in any of those publications, the value is about fifteen million dollars in equivalency. And the community programs, which you've, uh, may have heard about from Samantha and/or and/or April over the years, is one of our biggest programs in conjunction with Destination B.C. And we give, uh, there's a whole range of, uh, uh, projects that happen. I know this year in Dawson Creek, you had a refresh of your video, a refresh of your imagery, and that was all through this program in conjunction with us and Tourism Dawson Creek. And here's a number of things that we've been up to. One of the things that we pride ourselves in is we're a staff, we have a small office here in, in the northeast, and we have our main office in Prince George, and we have an office in Prince Rupert. But throughout the, our short travel season, we try to put our two feet down in every corner that we can of Northern British Columbia, and the red dots signify where, uh, the staff has been, and it's not just to visit, it's usually to do a project or to host a client or to do something with some of our travelers. And this was this year, this summer season alone was, we, that's the area that we covered.
Wow.
Sorry, I'm trying to click here. I'm not sure.
It's good until now.
Move it for me. Here, I'll just do it.
Did you get any vacation this summer?
Uh, no, we don't, we tend not to take vacation in the summer. There we go. So what has, some of what we do around the, and we've done all, a lot of this in Dawson Creek and in your area, but we do a number of, uh, community tourism planning workshops. This one happened to be in the Robson Valley. As I, I mentioned, mountain biking is a sector that people are traveling from all over the world. Um, I know that you're quite active, some of you, I heard talk of Facebook earlier, and we're involved in that, of course, but the conversations we see is we know that people are now traveling from the, as far away as the UK just to mountain bike in Northern British Columbia. We're actively involved in the northwest particularly in helping them get off the ground. Um, um, a new area they're branding called the Steelhead Paradise, and, uh, we do tourism workshops across Northern British Columbia all, all year long. This one was in the Buckley-Nachaco. Everyone here has, uh, a smartphone, correct? And I fully expect all of you have the Northern British Columbia app on it to help you find your way. That's a hint, everyone can download it for free. Um, one of the, this is two years, Dawson Creek has invested with that, with us. This is something we created for, really, it started for residents of Northern British Columbia, but it is meant to be for the consumers and the travelers that are coming here. Um, funny little story was that I was listening to the Mark Forsyth Show on CBC Radio one day as I was driving to a meeting, and Bob from Fort St. John, I don't know Bob, uh, proceeded to tell the province that his favorite app is the Northern British Columbia app. I don't know if he knew it was tourism that generated it, but, um, it's something that he said him and his family use extensively in this area to go and find dinner or gas station. You can see on the right is an iPad stand. You had one in your visitor center this year, and it's just another tool for the traveler to look for information is on the app, and then we put, we're putting those throughout the region. Um, we have an extensive program with all our visitor centers called the iShare Program. This group of women is going on a familiarization tour that we fund. Uh, I think this was Fort St. John, and it's something that we've done for four years now. Um, we also go across the region to many events. This was at Sea Fest in Prince Rupert, hence the Tuuk and the cold weather, and that was June in Prince Rupert. And of course, we do many things with social media, and I won't go in depth in that. Um, we did a major project on the Stewart-Cassiar Highway this year to get them, uh, marketing more. Haida Gwaii, you might have heard about the poll raising that happened, that received international acclaim all over the world, media coverage, and when they covered it, what was interesting, they didn't just cover Haida Gwaii, they often covered the rest of Northern British Columbia. The Alaska Hi, uh, Highway Heritage Project is one of the key things we will be working on in the next couple of years, led by April and the, the Board of Directors for the Alaska Highway Community. Um, the experiential workshop, I don't know if anyone here participated in the one two years ago, I guess it was, in Dawson Creek, but what came out of it, this one was in Fort St. John, experiential workshop is looking at your community through the traveler's eyes. And what came out of it in Dawson Creek was a redo or a refresh to your community, uh, visitor guide, and this is one of my favorite guides in all of northern B.C. I think it's very customer-focused and they've done a wonderful job. North Pacific Camry Photo Shoot. We are the film commission or the film liaison, I should say, for northern B.C. This is a movie called The Seventh Sun that was shot at Canus Hill Falls, uh, last year, I believe, and it hasn't been released yet as a movie. Fort Nelson, we did promotional work this year with a video shoot. And, uh, as I said, tourism is alive and growing, but the challenge for all of us is to make sure it's well and thriving, and this is what I wanted to leave you with, is that one of the things, you hear it all the time from other industries, but tourism is got major labor issues and land use issues, and these are not going to end anytime soon. And I think all of us need to work together, work with other industry to make sure that the hotels and restaurants have the labor that they need to serve their clients. Uh, you know, none of us want, there are destinations in the world where it costs fifty dollars to buy a hamburger in those resource areas, and I don't think any of us want that. We want to make sure that we're on top of those challenges. I think anywhere you go in northern B.C. that we want to have the same levels of service. Um, here, as we, you would expect anywhere else you would travel in the world, and that's something that we're putting a lot of focus on. Um, and finally, that, working with our community leaders and at the provincial level, so when you have your meetings with, um, MLAs, et cetera, please remind them that tourism's important, and that it really is a social fabric issue. So our mantra is a good place to live, is a great place, or good place to visit. Something like the Encana Event Center, a major, uh, investment of the community is now a tourism staple for people traveling from all over northern B.C. and Alberta to go to the Encana Event Center. And I know you're ambassadors for your community, please be an ambassador for the whole region and, and remind anyone you talk to at the importance of welcoming people to our area. Um, finally, we are, as an organization, going to be focused on working with the new Crown Corporation. Um, it's amazing when, uh, Tourism British Columbia moves into the government and then now out again, the amount of education that we have to do about our region, it's never-ending, and with the new Crown Corporation, it's the same. One little good news is, story for you, is that Ryan McIver was appointed to the newly-formed Marketing Committee of eighteen people from across the province. He's one of three people in northern B.C. that was appointed along with myself to help guide Destination British Columbia in their marketing. So you have, we have that northern voice, and you have it right here in Dawson Creek. And we're looking, as an organization, to grow our revenue so we can do more things. And finally, uh, we're looking to strengthen our board capacity. Um, I'm, I'm sure some of you are associated with many volunteer things, and, um, one of the things that's changed over the last five to ten years is less people are finding time to volunteer on boards, and goodness knows, I know that, because I don't have enough hours in the week these days with the Canada Games coming. So I thank you for your time. That was me trying to go as quickly as I could to give you that overview about the importance of tourism. Any questions?
I already asked mine.
Good.
Oh, uh, but the app, can I do it on my Blackberry? Is my Blackberry...
No, uh, but it's, it's a movie site, so it's, it's Android and, and iPhone. No one's buying Blackberries these days, sorry.
You have a what? I don't have a smart phone.
I get asked that a lot, but unfortunately, it was something, it wasn't a smart investment on our part, so we didn't do it.
Anthony, thank you. I just wanted to add one other thing, and I, it hit me on the weekend as I was, uh, on a Facebook page, there's a young man up in Fort Nelson, Chris Gale Northern Photography, and he has, I, so I see them checking their heads and they are familiar with him. He has amazing, amazing stuff.
Yeah.
Would be great for anytime you want to grab some amazing photography out of the north and on the highway, he's always there. He's got some amazing stuff, and I just thought of that as a...
Yeah, and, and you know, if you look at the Facebook and you go and look at the Northern British Columbia Facebook site, which is the one we run, um, it's about the conversation on there, and, and, and if you want to feel good about where you live, go look at the conversations. People from around the world talk about where we live, and you know what gets people talking? It's amazing, actually, it always blows my mind, is wildlife. Any kind of wildlife shot, it's just, it's crazy.
I forgot one thing for you, Aaron, that's your, your, this is your guide to be an ambassador.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. No problem.
I appreciate you guys coming this morning. Back to our agenda. Item seven point six, we have a report from the city planner regarding the Dawson Creek Master, uh, Transportation Plan and some of the short-term implementation items. Counselor Schuman.
Hi.
Move, Counselor Wilbur, second discussion. Counselor Parswell.
Yeah, just, um, a question, uh, for you to, to Jim. Uh, I looked at the recommendation. Uh, it says to receive for information, and I do recognize that there are policies that will be coming to council as they, as staff has time to work on them. Am I right or wrong in assuming that other, apart from policy matters, uh, these matters, these things, uh, will be a- acted upon during the two thousand fourteen, fifteen budget year without, we, we, no need to come back to us, uh, we've already approved the Transportation Master Plan, but just, I'm not sure if, if things will be unfolding, th- all these things, uh, or whether it's be coming back to us.
Okay, so, uh, through your worship, um, the, uh, staff, uh, perspective here in the report is that there are some things that you need to do as a, as an underlying, uh, foundational work. For instance, you need a traffic calming policy, because at the moment, you tend to put a stop sign up. Um, so, uh, staff is proposing that we'll research best practices on that and bring you back a policy which will help you deal, uh, with situations where you have, uh, neighborhood concerns about speeding, that sort of thing. Uh, secondly, there are a few no-brainer things, like the Transportation Master Plan says, when we've moved the bus route so that it goes the other way on the street, maybe a good idea would be to move the bus stop across the road. Uh, you know, so we're thinking maybe that's something we ought to do. Uh, so mostly, this is about planning, underlying planning work that needs to be done and a few very simple things. Anything over and above that will come to you as a separate budget request, because it will have, uh, capital budget implications. So these are the things that, uh, need to be done as a first step and other things that can be simply done, uh, that don't require that capital, uh, uh, budget requirement or, uh, allocation of resources, because as you know, you have a very tight capital budget for this coming year. Uh, so that's the, the reasoning behind the, uh, uh, staff report, and, uh, but I wouldn't want you to think that, uh, there's no expense to this. There's going to be a tremendous workload on Kevin and Jody for this work, uh, which they apparently volunteered to take on, uh, looking at the report. So I think you should just accept that and be happy.
Counselor Parswell.
Okay, thanks, sir. So I appreciate the fact that policies undergirding this will come to us, but just, uh, just for my own stupidity, satisfy my own stupidity here, let's take example one here, move the bus shelter on the south side of Hundred and Second Avenue, uh, east of Fourteenth Street to the north side, um, that would just happen, won't it? I mean, you don't need, I'm just wondering...
Yes, we're, we're just reporting that we're doing that, because why would we not?
Why would we? So a lot of things will be happening, uh, you know, regardless of council here, just that we approved the plan already.
And one of the things I talked to Jim briefly about is, um, through my old, uh, days with the, uh, Mother Corp, with ICBC, I've reached out to them through the, uh, ICBC Road Safety Loss Prevention Area, because they do a ton of work in communities and in rural areas and high-crash, uh, uh, intersections and identifying those to work with either the Ministry of Highways or local municipalities and infrastructure improvement. And so I've reached out to them and asked them if they would be willing to come and jointly work with Kevin, um, because they bring that safety component, and sometimes they'll bring, uh, dough as well in terms of helping us either do the planning, uh, for some of the calming, uh, strategies that we put in place for the intersections, and in fact, give us some of the, uh, benefits of that experience and expertise in traffic calming, uh, infrastructure techniques that we may be able to leverage and use in some of those areas that we're looking at today. And I use the example of the Nineteenth Street and a Hundred and Eighth, I think, as they got, uh, that hit my, uh, Facebook page, where was a concern raised by the residents, who said, look, that was, we lobbied the council, they put that in there because of the high speeds of the traffic, and so we don't want to just see it simply removed without some, uh, other, um, infrastructure put in place to ensure we don't have a racetrack back in that area. So to me, I think that's a really good and positive piece for us to be able to engage the community in it. But I'm going to, I've received response back from ICBC and they are going to get back to us, uh, and see if they can bring some expertise and hopefully some resources to help in that planning component, which they do, right?
Nice.
Any further discussion? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? It's Kerry.
Thank you. Uh, bylaw, eight point one. Counselor Malkinson. Counselor Schuman. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Don't that record it, sir?
Absolutely.
Kerry. Done. Uh, item nine, the mayor's, uh, business. So it's been kind of a quiet couple of weeks with the holiday season, and, um, so the mayor was pretty quiet in terms of activities, but, um, a couple of things I did, uh, and have been working on, and one is our community profile, and it's funny, the, uh, folks from Northern, uh, B.C. Tourism talked about how, uh, how beneficial parts of the things that we do as a community and, and have done in the past. And so I met with, um, Chad, uh, from New Harvest Media, and this lady that works with Marva, I think her name was. Anyway, they're, they do the updates on this on a regular basis, and as I, as I went through this, there's a ton, a ton of information in here, um, that I know is absolutely duplicated in so many other places. So we're going to try and be a little bit more focused in terms of some of the material that we put into our community profile that, uh, should be in there, and then maybe some other stuff that we can just direct to the links to our city website and, and so we're working on that with them, and I have met with them. And it was a little bit also with the, I met with Hank Bridgman, Brendan and I did, uh, about a month ago. I forgot to update council on that, but I've asked him to come back. When I went to Calgary with the, um, that trade show, and I was out there trying to, uh, market the community, and I put together some packages of information and material and the little DVD we have of the community that I think Hank did about, I don't know, it was a while ago, uh, so I think it was Sustainable Dawson Creek. Um, and so, anyway, it was very, very well done, but it absolutely needs, I think, some refreshing, uh, to it in terms of some updating and some of the messagings that we want to present through that. So I've asked Hank to do some work on it, and, uh, he's going to bring back a proposal that we'll bring through our budget discussions, you know, in the coming, uh, months about that as a, uh, topic. Um, the Lakota Christmas event, I was invited on the twenty-eighth of December. You know, the Lakota Event Center, Lakota Riding Center is one of those facilities in our community that sometimes tends not to get as much attention as, uh, as the Encana Event Center does, or a pool, or arenas, and, and I noticed when I was retired, I was traveling back and forth to the lake, at Ron Island Lake, almost, uh, daily when I didn't, uh, have anything else to do, and I couldn't believe how busy that event center, that riding center was on a regular basis. And so I went, um, on the twenty-eighth, they invited me to the Christmas Extravaganza, they call it, and so what they do is they put on, uh, exhibitions of all the different riding things that the kids and the people do who use that event center or that riding center on a regular basis, and they... And they have a hundred and, I think it's a hundred and thirty stalls of people who rent in there. There's a waiting list of thirty or forty or fifty people waiting to get in to get the stables. And it is a high-use facility, um, in our community. And it was amazing to me to see the amount of activity and the amount of people that were in attendance watching and enjoying that, uh, center. And I was really pleased to be able to go and see, uh, all of the different things that are going on in there and how, what a, what a high-use facility it is for our community and brings in, they, the people that use that facility and the people that are in that facility, they say it's the top facility in Western Canada, second only to Pinoka, which has a facility that has three riding arenas in it. But this place is just an unbelievable, uh, facility for our community. And so to me, I just was really pleased they invited me and, and I got to, uh, participate and witness it a little bit. Um, a big thanks to the community Christmas dinners, Salvation Army, um, the, uh, Sal- or the, um,
Saint Marks?
Sorry?
Saint Marks Church?
The Saint Marks and who, the Nowicki Friendship Center out there. You know, I was, uh, not able to attend the Salvation Army and my wife went in my stead and, uh, she said it was unbelievable how, how good it was. And I just, uh, really want to send out my appreciation to everybody who volunteers, uh, to help make that, uh, Christmas season a little bit more enjoyable, uh, for our community. Um, snow removal. Obviously has been a topic. Over the last, uh, couple of weeks, um, three or four weeks and, and I honestly cannot express how much I appreciate, um, what I've heard in feedback from the community about how, what a, what an amazing job our staff have been doing and have been attempting to do. And feedback's been incredible. And so to me, I just, you know, usually when things go bad in a period of really significant challenges for a community is when you don't want to stick a fork in your eye because you just get killed, right? And this has been unbelievable how positive the community have been in, in providing that support to us in terms of knowing, understanding reasonable expectations uh, of what they've been trying to do and accomplish. So I really want to emphasize on how much I appreciate the staff working long hours and putting in extra effort to try to get it done for us. The hired equipment and then the people in our community, uh, understanding that and having that reasonable expectation of knowing we can only get so much done. Uh, I've been getting it on my Facebook page and it's been unbelievable how supportive people have been and giving us tons of encouragement. So I really appreciate that. Um, Counselor Parslow had mentioned that I did an interview on the newspaper about, uh, a week ago in regards to what I saw as the issues that we need to be aware of for, uh, two thousand and fourteen. And so to me, I, I outlined first the, uh, sewer pipeline project that I think council have identified significantly as the number one project for us in this community. And I absolutely feel that's, we have to get that done. Uh, it's really unacceptable that we would have people in this community who are being flooded with raw sewage. So, uh, I identify that as one of my key priorities and I want to get that done. I mentioned to Jim this morning, we got a letter from C N. I'm going to Ottawa in the coming weeks to meet with Bob Zimmer. And I think I'm going to try and get to, uh, C N's head office in Montreal and make sure they understand the importance for that, for us as a community in that project. And if they can help us in any way, ensure that, working with Kevin and his staff and getting that, um, access and easement, all that stuff done for us. Um, I got a letter from C N, uh, just the other day in regards to the carrying hazardous materials, the oil and all that from Lacma Gantique tragedy. And so they wrote us a letter and I thought, that's a good opportunity for us to maybe try and get in to see them. Um, so that was one of the key capital projects for me is, uh, two thousand and fourteen. And, and then as I talked about the budget and saw the, we got the assessment information from Shelley about a month ago. And when I looked at the residential increase in assessment, I think in two thousand and thirteen was ninety-six million dollars. Uh, commercial was about sixty.
Sorry, I can't help you out today.
Come on.
Top of mind.
And light industry and heavy industry was about three million. So we, we had about a hundred and fifty million dollars in increased assessment. New assessment into our community. In nineteen ninety-nine, when I was just, had the chair of the finance portfolio in this community, the residential assessment at that time was two hundred and ninety-nine million dollars. And we went up by a hundred million last year. And that's in thirteen or fourteen years. We've seen that kind of an increase in assessment in this community. And so for people, first of all, say that our community isn't progressing, isn't moving forward, isn't, uh, dynamic in terms of what's going on in here, you only have to see those numbers to appreciate that we are facing uh, a fairly significant increase in what's going on in the development in our community. And what that in, increase in assessment means to us, a hundred million dollars in increased assessment on residential. And honestly, I tried to do the calculations on what it means in new revenue. But, um, when there's flat increases on, um, two aspects of it, I think the, and Shelley will be able to help me here, the two thousand and thirteen residential rate would have been around five bucks.
Five sixteen.
And so a, a hundred million is five hundred and twenty million, or five hundred and twenty thousand in new dough, just in residential. And the commercial of sixty million, probably another two hundred?
Sure. Sorry, I can't help you, but my head is full of numbers.
Okay.
Jill, don't be writing numbers down.
So, so as we look at that, there's eight hundred or nine hundred thousand dollars in new revenue to this community uh, in two thousand and fourteen, anticipated for the budget. On the other side of that, and for, so to me, that new revenue means it gives us the opportunity to address and start to address some of the fiscal components that you deal with on a regular basis. Now, how do we address, um, the inflationary increases that we're going to in the budget with twenty percent increase in hydro and all those other things? But I just, to me, the aspect of, m- my goal obviously in, uh, as a mayor in the long term is to get that fair share money out of operating and have twelve or thirteen or fourteen million dollars of revenue each year that we can plan capital infrastructure projects. And when we, when and if we get to that stage one day, we are in a sound, sound financial position. But it means hard policy decisions around services in the long term of how we get there. How do we roll that eight million out of fair share, out of our operating anti-capital? But eight hundred or nine hundred thousand dollars of new revenue coming into our community as a result of new assessment is very, very significant in terms of allowing us to be, uh, and try to meet those challenges. And so that was the gist of my conversation in the newspaper and that's why I'm excited about, um, moving forward in the coming months with our budget discussions, the budget deliberations, hoping we can engage people in our community in the information and the conversation and the discussion about, because it comes down to, to me, what are those service, policy components that the public value and consider to be necessary for the continuation of our community and providing a high quality of life that we believe we should be? So that was my, uh, gist of the, uh, newspaper article. Counselor Malkinson.
And, uh, well, I thank you for that, your worship. That was a wonderful update. Um, I, uh, sometime before the end of the meeting, and perhaps this is inappropriate time, uh, I, uh, well, how's the, uh, strategic planning, uh, business going? We're getting somebody?
So I, I was going to update it under, I, I have met and had the conversation with the gentleman. I'll be meeting with him next week and hopefully we'll be able to bring a proposal forward to council that'll meet your guys' needs for, um, moving that process forward.
Awesome.
So that's it for the mayor's business. Any questions or comments? Counselor Parslow?
No, just reinforce, uh, I thought that was a very good article and, uh, I thought it was very visionary and I'm right behind you. Um, the other, one thing that was included in your article is that we're committed to completing the Calvin Crook Center this year as well in our budget. And I would put that number probably number two in our, in our actions probably as it relates to capital because, uh, we want to make sure that that is, is signed and sealed and operational this, uh, two thousand and fourteen year.
Absolutely. Thanks for all your help. I'm teasing. Any further discussion? Thank you. Uh, item ten, the diary.
Uh, yes, your worship, I'll have Duncan come forward and just give you, uh, an update on what's happening at the Calvin Crook Center. Morning.
Morning, how are you?
Uh, good. I went to one of your hockey games the other night.
Hopefully the second one.
No, the first one.
Sorry about that. Um, okay, so Calvin Crook Center, uh, brief update, uh, December, um, received approval from council to move forward. On the seventeenth, we, uh, we met on-site. We had our initial startup meeting on-site with Hagy Construction. Approximately fifteen, fifteen or so people there, trades, all the trades showed up. Uh, we had our architect and our engineers, uh, walk through the building with the trades, go through any questions that they had. Um, walk through the, the building drawings and, and just kind of address any initial concerns or, or just information that was required so that they could get starting here early in January. Uh, we turned over the keys to Hagy Construction, so they are now in control of that building. It's their work site. And, uh, we have a signed contract with Hagy Construction. So January sixth, being today, was the, uh, the start date for most of the trades. Some of the work was done in, uh, December. They got some of the minor patching and they, they just got a good idea of what they're doing in that building and what the, the job entails. But, uh, they start today. And, uh, we're just working on a, a more detailed schedule for site visits and, and just approval processes. And we went through, uh, a lot of administrative, uh, items on the seventeenth. So moving forward, they're, uh, they're in the building. They have the contract signed and, uh, it's, uh, it's back on track.
Thank you, Duncan.
Okay.
Any questions? Thank you. Don, I said it publicly in that newspaper article, I got the confidence, all the confidence in the world in having John and Olaf Hagy involved as a local contractor, uh, with their demonstrated, uh, history of, they'll get it done for us. They'll get it done on time and it'll be on budget and we'll be having an opening ceremony in June or July. Thank you.
They're brave words, if I may say so.
The confidence in the contractor.
No, that's, that's fine.
That's, yes.
The opening ceremony.
I was thinking, uh, maybe move to August.
Item twelve, the strategic priorities chart.
Yes, through your worship, this is just a placeholder. Uh, you don't have a new strategic chart yet, so we're just keeping these in place until you do.
Thank you. Committee of the whole?
No.
Media question period?
Really?
Happy New Year, media. Okay, we're going to recess till we're closed. Counselor Malkinson, Counselor Wilber, all in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you.